...this meeting to order. I'd like to thank you for attending this evening and coming out to participate in your local government. I'm going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge this evening, so I'd ask that you all please rise. Dear Lord, we humbly bow our heads before you this evening, and we just pray that your Spirit come in upon this meeting. We are imperfect men trying to make perfect decisions. Open our minds to pour out knowledge so that we can do the business of this county. Dear Lord, we beseech you that you look down upon us favorably. We pray for forgiveness of our sins. We pray for those that protect us. We pray for those whose families are dealing with the loss of those individuals and friends. We think about our first responders today. We think about our soldiers on the front lines. We think about those in our community that try to lead us. Give us that wisdom and guidance, dear Lord, we are those people. Thank you for all things, and it's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, I'd like to welcome each and every one of you here this evening. Look forward to the input and spirited discussion that these meetings often bring. On your agenda here this evening, we have quite a bit to cover not mentioned on the agenda here this evening. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and address an issue that many of you have come today for, and that is in regards to the resolution that was mentioned at the previous meeting. For the benefit of the board members and for the benefit of those here, I'm going to move the election of the chairman and the vice chairman down to the last portion of the meeting this evening. All right. In order to give us some time to get adjusted, we're going to go ahead and adopt the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, item number three on your agenda. November 3, regularly scheduled board meeting of our Swanee County Commission. Gentlemen, are there any changes or corrections that need to be made to those minutes?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Okay. Moving on to the resolution regarding the compressor station that's referenced as the Hildreth but has been moved to the O'Brien area. What I want to open this discussion with is the fact that this has nothing to do with the board's control or action that can be taken with regard to the Sable Trail Pipeline. This discussion is solely based upon the recommendation of Commissioner Wainwright that we send a letter that turns kind of into a resolution to relocate that station to a less populated area, or that may result in it not being located in our county. We don't know. It may stay where it's at. I'd like to read a letter that was sent to us by the attorneys that were... Let me see if I can find it here real quick. This is not... We did get a letter from Sable Trail as well, but I'm going to read the letter from the eminent domain attorneys Harris, Bowerly, Ziegler, and Lopez. And it was addressed to the county attorney Jimmy Privatt. It says, "As you know, Sable Trail has an application for a certificate of public convenience and necessity authorizing the construction, operation, and service to be provided by the project before the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and Docket Number CP-15-17-000. We have discussed the Sable Trail project and local permitting issues on a couple of occasions. Sable Trail's pipeline, compressor, and/or meter and regulating stations that are proposed to be located in Swanee County are not subject to local permits such as building permits and site plan approvals. Specifically, the Sable Trail project is not subject to local planning department or building department review because state and local laws are preempted by the Natural Gas Act and Natural Gas Pipeline Safety Act for the construction, operation of interstate natural gas pipelines and puritant facilities. The preemptive effect of the Natural Gas Act and Natural Gas Pipeline Safety Act is described more fully in the attachment. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. Please contact me if you have any questions." This letter is dated November 17, 2015. The subsequent documents that are attached are U.S. Codes referenced as well as case law is cited in the attachment. So I read you that letter for the benefit of the public, but also for the benefit of the board to let you know that what we have proposed here this evening is a resolution, and I'll read it. It says, "Whereas citizenry of Swanee County have raised concerns regarding Sable Trail Transmission LLC's relocation of the Hildreth Compression Station, Compression Station 5, to an area outside of historically dominated Hildreth area to the county of the county to the second option location, Compressor Station 5, Option 2, at approximately the intersection of County Road 49 and Market Road to 216th Street. And whereas the citizenry has raised concerns that the shift in location to the secondary option site has brought the compression station location and its reoccurring noise and potential environmental health and safety impacts in closer proximity to a more densely populated rural residential area, and whereas the board recognizes the increased net change and potentially affected residential properties and desires to express the concerns of its citizenry to Sable Trail Transmission LLC. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Swanee County, Florida as follows, that the Board of County Commissioners, Swanee County, Florida, does hereby request Sable Trail Transmission LLC reconsider the location of the Hildreth Compression Station, Compression Station 5, Option 2, and move said compression station to another location along the proposed route where there would be a net decrease in the rural residential properties affected by the location, pass, and adopt and approve this day of January... Actually, of November 2015. And it would be signed by my signature and the clerk of the court." So, gentlemen, that is what's on the table here before you today. That's what the discussion should entail, and if anything outside of that comes, then that was not an agenda item. This was not an agenda item, but we will entertain discussion surrounding this resolution and what it supports. Does any board member have any comments they'd like to make at this time?
Allow me just a moment, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking over the Option A resolution.
Well, actually, we're just going to stick with B. That's what we're going to do here this evening unless you have something that you want to add.
Well, that's fine. I just wanted to read A while I was here in case there is something I want to add from that one.
Okay.
I hadn't read the A, Option A.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
Just briefly, the significant difference is only that Option B has a more accurate description of the location. It actually references locations included in other documents.
Yeah, I like B better.
And B is the one that I read into the record? And I will mention that everyone who filled out a comments card will not be able to speak at the end, but I have selected several here that we will be able to hear in the comments and concerns section. Because they reference what we're discussing here today. During the comments and concerns section, you can speak. You can during the comments and concerns section.
Was that the information that you forwarded through Mandy?
Yes. I'd like to read it, Senator. I'd like to go to make a bigger shift on you due to demand.
Does...
Doesn't have to do with the compression station?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I recognize that it's out of the ordinary, but if we're... In this particular item, and it's totally up to you, you've got a number of folks that want to speak specifically to this issue. I'd rather let them... Those individuals in your comment request forms, those speak now to this rather than wait until the end of the meeting.
Well, listen, if we can speak directly to the compression station, how many people here are in favor... Let me say this, in favor of the compression station, please raise your hand. I think it's safe to say, commissioners, that these people are opposed to the compression station, and this resolution supports that action, does it not? I see heads nodding. So I recognize that you're here to oppose the compression station. I recognize that. So my point is that the action that you have requested of this board has come about and probably will be passed. So obviously, if you have further comments that you want to make at the end of the meeting, then I would so allow it. But I mean, if you still want them to speak, Commissioner Wainwright, and that's the general consensus of the board, then we can certainly have them come forward.
I would rather for them to speak now. I think with the new action that the state legislator took a couple of years ago, they have the opportunity to speak prior to action being taken. So that would give them the opportunity to speak now.
Okay.
If it's all right, I'll go ahead and offer a motion of approval for the resolution that was read into the record, Option B.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion among the board?
I have no additional comments, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody down there having any... Okay. Our first speaker this evening will be Mr. David Shields, and I ask that when you come to the podium that you would state your name and address for the record.
Hello again. My name is David Shields. Address is 6944 210th Place in O'Brien, Florida. I came to you guys several weeks ago and have been in contact with Mr. Wainwright, which has been very responsive to our obvious concerns to the proposed compressor site and also Mr. Gamble as well. And I very much appreciate how quickly you guys have moved on this. To be honest, I didn't realize it was going to move this fast. So, thank you. I'm just going to echo, again, you know, a lot of our concerns, of course, which you guys are well aware of, and by virtue of the resolution in hand, obviously, you guys confirm. You know, it's... The only thing I would comment is, you know, I don't know if, you know, in the resolution, just injustice to the folks from another compressor site, I would almost say that, you know, a minimum distance of some kind or something, you know, I know, you know, the language was net negative effect to the folks of another compressor site. And I certainly don't want to give this issue to someone else. And maybe it's just not in the county at all, you know, so I don't know. And that may be their real likelihood, just looking down the easement where they're going to come. But I have several neighbors that have come along to also support your resolution here and to give comment. And again, we very much appreciate what you're doing here. And there's also, obviously, quite a few folks that have some other concerns, I think, specific to the river crossing as well. So I don't think we necessarily expect you guys to say no pipeline through Swanee County. It's probably not necessarily a likelihood, as none of the sites or none of the proposed routes that Sable Trail gave didn't go through Swanee. So, but if anything, you know, definitely trying to protect us from compressor sites and, of course, anything that might be hazardous to our water supply, would certainly be grateful. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your input. Our next speaker will be Joe Perrung. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Joe Perrung, and I'm the president and CEO of Security Safe Company on 216th Street and as well as a property owner at the corner of 49 and 216th Street. First, I would like to tell you how personally I'm impressed with the board and the chairman's. Swanee County has been a great partner to my company, and hopefully, you know, not only do we protect this facility, but, you know, from FDLE, Homeland Security, they've... This county's been very good to me over the last... Since 1985. So we appreciate that. But we have a huge investment in this county. I have a $3 million piece of property at that corner. We have approximately a $3 million payroll with employees living on that road. That's a huge concern. I have two diabetic children. My wife is a diabetes researcher, and it's quite amazing of, you know, what these things, once they burn off and stuff like that. But I just wanted to say, you know, for a county to open up in prayer impressed me so much, and I don't know... I'm not trying to invoke my faith, but I wanted to, just as a citizen and as a man, I thank you for that, that I can't believe that our commissioners are actually seeking God for guidance and wisdom. That's amazing to me. So anyhow, I appreciate that. Again, we've been an employer here since 1985. Told you about my payroll, our tax revenue. I'm a statewide contractor. All of my tax revenue comes to my house, which is Swanee County. You know, we're very proud of this county. Told you about my children, the issues there. We know about North Florida Christian Center that's right there that has, you know, hundreds of retirees that have poured their life into... Most of them are missionaries, if the truth be known, and they have so much health issues. That's a concern. I brought Forrest Cothran here, who's, you know, he's got his master's degree at UF. He's a gator, about foundational, and we know about all the sinkhole issues that we've had through that vein, through that area, and the vibrations and what they do. And he lives near the switch down in Bell and how they feel the vibrations in homes 12 miles away. That's quite devastating. I'm really concerned about what happens with the water table and the vibrations. My daughter is getting married in April, and so we've given them 30 acres for a wedding gift, and so we've been having the land x-rayed, and if you'll let him speak, he'll tell you what the x-ray showed. And I'm really now concerned about them investing... Well, my wife would say, if this thing goes through, I mean, we're packing up, we've got to go. You know, we can't have it with my health. My employees won't have it, and that's just going to... We would take jobs from Swanee County and take them somewhere else. We don't want to do that. We poured our life into this county, and we're satisfied here. Our culture, I just left a meeting last week with Homeland Security, FDLE, our power company, about active shooters, bomb threats, and what's going on in the world. And is it a secured site? I mean, terrorism is, God forbid, it comes to our culture, but it's going to come. So is the site secure, you know? All these are questions of me being a technology company that we're real concerned about. Other than that, that's basically first and foremost, I just want to say again, I really appreciate that. We appreciate, you know, Jimmy Privatt. I mean, can you imagine the load that this man's got to take as our counsel for our county, that it affects so many lives? And this really does. This is a life-changing moment. This just isn't about something going to blow some gas off and burn up 30 feet in the air and, you know, all the toxins that are going to come down. This is more than that. You know, this is going to change our culture. And for that, as an investor in the county, especially on that corner, I'm basically going to about lose everything I got, you know, because we couldn't stay there. So, but thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Perrung, for your...
For the record, my last name is Perrung. P as in Paul, E-U-R-R-U-N-G. Talking about vibrations, a couple of years ago, I went through six bypasses and three stents, and you will feel a vibration. That much I can tell you. So anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perrung, for your input this evening and your contribution to our county, both economic development and also your activism. Next up, we'll listen to Ms. Rosalynn Johnson. Okay. Next person we're going to hear from is Forrest Cothran. Thank you. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Forrest Cothran and will be Joe Perrung's future son-in-law. So I come with an extensive foundation background of wealth of information as far as GPRs, geotechnical studies, and as we know in this area, if you look at a geothermal map, that quadrant of Swanee County, from Market Road and 49, is full of anomalies, as we know of the holes in the roads that were repaired not long ago. That is one big anomaly through that area, as Florida is as well. So Florida is one big anomaly. It's just heavily populated and concentrated, some more than other geographical territories. The vibrations, I live in Bell now. I'm 12 miles from the station in Bell, and it takes a 4,200-square-foot house, and it rattles it to the windows about fall out. I've been there. I know it. I know the pain. I've dealt with it. Moved O'Brien to get away from that thing, and I'll be darned, here we go again. So anyways, what I want to just touch base on is all the homeowners around that radius, from a foundational standpoint, how commercial contractors, which I'm in that industry as well, how they collapse anomalies or foundation issues is through vibration. All the homes that are around that area, I know I've suffered it 12 miles away from the one in Gilchrist County. You're susceptible. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Mr. Cothran, before you leave, would you state your address for us for the record?
Yes, sir. It's in Bell, Florida, 5750 Northwest 57th Court, Bell, Florida, 32619, moving to 216th.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be, and you're going to have to help me with his last name, Johanna DeGraffenreed.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And she's not a resident, but she's going to offer some expert testimony, I would assume, from law school and in a master of environmental law and policy. Please welcome her.
Thank you. Thank you to the commission and to this county for having me today. I'm here with Gulf Restoration Network. I'm here representing the 10 members that we have in this county. I'm based, actually, in New Orleans. My name is Johanna DeGraffenreed. My credentials include a master's of environmental law and policy from Vermont Law School with a specialty area of land use law, so I have a little bit of knowledge in what y'all are dealing with here at the commission, and water law. I want to raise with y'all several concerns and especially bring to your attention the EPA letter that was sent in response to the draft D.I.S. It's included in the packet that we emailed you, as well as into these hard documents that we've brought for you today. I want to echo the serious concerns of your residents about this compressor station and urge you not only to move it from its current location, but to ensure that it never finds a place in this county. It has serious impacts on the health of the residents here. We're seeing the EPA take on stricter and stricter regulations about the air quality surrounding these compressor stations because of that fact. Unfortunately, those regulations may never come into play, and we may never see those air concerns brought to any sort of federal or state court. All that we will see is the court of opinion and morality on those issues when we see sick children from these compressor stations. We've also talked extensively, and these experts have done a fantastic job from their personal experience as well as from their professional experience, about the geology here in this area of Florida. The EPA raises concerns about the karst geology in their letter. They state specifically that sinkhole activity in Florida is pervasive and nearly random. They also state the fact that the applicant-defined karst-sensitive areas, and by the applicant, I want to clarify that that's the Sable Trail property company, in Florida, has a 32-mile segment in certain areas. They also never did extensive studies in this area. The maps that they have included for this compressor station also and for the pipeline route, they've never done extensive topographic studies. FERC, when citing in their draft D.I.S., specifically cites the fact that this company in no way did the studies that were necessary to build this pipeline or this compressor station. They, in fact, did nearly zero studies that are modern. Some of the studies that they submitted and relied upon from the state agency of Florida actually are from as old as 1986. With how pervasive your sinkholes are in this area of Florida, based on the limestone geology here, you can guarantee that there are more sinkholes and that there will continue to be more sinkholes than what this company even realizes. I also want to point out the compressor station vibration is part of that. On page 19 of the EPA letter that you all have submitted to you, on the third paragraph down, it states specifically that the EPA recommends that FERC address the compressor station vibration-induced impacts to zones of fractures and underlying limestone. Continuous vibration effects could be expected to aggravate ongoing chemical and physical weathering. Sinkhole formation can be triggered by construction activities such as ground vibrations from heavy equipment, and the proposed compressor stations are expected to vibrate continuously for the project life. So while Sable Trail has tried to address your noise concerns, they frankly have not done anything to address your vibration concerns. I just want to raise that as an aspect of a problem with this compressor station with you all as commissioners here. I also want to speak to the fact that with the river crossing, that they have submitted the wrong map to their draft D.I.S. They don't even know where they're trying to put in this pipeline. They don't even know where they're trying to put it in. How can we count on the fact that they're actually going to do it correctly? I also want to speak to the fact that in this geology, one of the main concerns is the fact that you all have an incredible resource here in the Florida aquifer. Y'all provide water resources to the entire state of Florida, in this county. And Georgia, yes, ma'am. The Florida aquifer is being deemed a sole-source aquifer by the EPA at this time in this letter, which gives it specific protections legally that you all should know about. And if the company isn't raising those with you, I would really seriously ask you, humbly, that you raise those questions with them. It definitely places this company at a risk of violating the Safe Drinking Water Act, if any, and based on the track record of this company, if there were to be any explosions or leaks or damages that were to happen. I want to also point out the fact that it's true that, under the Department of Transportation, that this company is required to work with your emergency responders to develop a plan if anything goes wrong. That being said, they specifically state in their responses to the EPA on this issue that they actually, when there is a disaster, when something does happen, are only responsible for the turn-off and turn-on valves. They are not responsible for anything else in their disaster response, which means that the burden of that cost is placed entirely on your taxpayers. Please take a moment before approving this compressor station to talk with your emergency responders about their concerns. I used to be an EMT, and I can tell you that when there is a disaster like this, it takes everyone to respond. And in counties where those agencies are already overburdened with existing sites and with other issues that you all see on a daily basis, a disaster like this would be catastrophic. And there is no way that that company is bringing in additional staff members to do anything other than protect their financial interests by cutting off the valve. Legally, they are not required to fund additional hazardous materials training to make sure that you all are really prepared with any sort of disaster response materials, and especially with staff if something were to go wrong in this county. There are serious concerns about the safety of this pipeline and the compressor station, and they are genuine, and I would really urge you to please continue to open lines of communication with your emergency responders, with the company demanding that they provide accurate mapping and assessment of this pipeline and the compressor station, that they look at the vibrations on this specific geology, that you all take into advice the EPA letter that was sent in response to the draft D.I.S., and that you continue to protect the water source of almost all Floridians in your sole-source aquifer that you all are protecting here in this county. Now, this company has also failed to provide adequate alternate routes for this pipeline. While there are several that are proposed, they all go through this county, and frankly, the alternate route analysis is just as poor, if not poorer, than their initial route analysis. It's a serious concern of the Gulf Restoration Network and of our members. Why is it that this county is being deemed a sacrifice zone for this pipeline and this compressor station without any real analysis by this company? I think it's frankly unprofessional on their behalf, and I would ask you to please demand higher from them before you make a final decision. I know that you all will make an informed decision. You have an incredible residential and citizenry here that's advocating for what they want, and I hope that you will listen to them. Thank you for letting me speak today, and please don't hesitate to contact me with any questions.
Could you please return to the podium? I have a few questions, maybe somebody else, maybe other people do as well.
Yeah.
Could you say your name again? I apologize.
No, no problem. I just... I quickly leave because I want to make sure everyone gets to speak. Johanna DeGraffenreed. And you can spell my last name, D-E-G-R-A-F-F-E-N-R-E-I-D.
Let me say it, DeGraffenreed?
Yes, perfect. I know it's a mouthful.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. DeGraffenreed?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, I have a few. You're speaking about, during your testimony, you're talking about a decision that we had to make in regards to the pipeline and... to make in regards to the pipeline and this and that. Are you referring to the resolution that we're talking about here about the compressor station?
Mm-hmm.
Or are you implying that we have some other jurisdiction other than what we're doing here this evening by resolution?
You all do have jurisdiction to ask this company for proper documentation coming through your county. You have total jurisdiction to give you complete information when making this decision, and especially when making sure that they, because they will be coming through with serious construction equipment. For example, making sure that all of those needs are met is incredibly important, and you have the power with this resolution, which is technically legally non-binding, to tell this company that they need to provide this information to you. And you do have control over zoning, which means that you have control over where this compressor station can go. So I would just refer back to that with you all.
I guess my question is then, you said we have the right to request information.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I would assume that that is what we could do.
Yes, sir.
In an effort to, like, say if the board were inclined to, say, do away with this pipeline coming through Swanee County, as you noted, then what mechanisms do we have for that, for the benefit of the board, for the benefit of the public, being that it is a federal project? Can you speak to that?
I appreciate that. I would want to make sure, first of all, that I don't take up too much time here. I'm not trying to not answer your question, but I'm not your attorney, so I want to be clear about that.
Right. I'm saying, but you were presented as an expert witness.
Yes, sir.
And you put your credentials down on here.
Yes, sir.
So if you hadn't have done that...
No, I appreciate that, and I'm going to answer your question, but it's important for me to say, as someone who's attended a law school, that I'm not your attorney. You all know this, right? And so it's real important for me to say that. So I just got to get it out of my mouth, right? Yeah, hi, nice to meet you. So, Mr. Privat, what do you believe the options are for this county commission?
Oh, very good. That's nice. That's good. I disagree with one of the statements that you made, and actually the last statement that you made, in that the location of the compression station can be done away with by zoning in the particular county.
It's, I want to clarify, I'm sorry. It's not that I said that you can do away with the compressor station. You can zone your county and deem where is safe and where is unsafe for industrial sites. Am I right?
Yes. Location, now that you've limited down to what you said, to industrial sites, I would agree with you.
Mm-hmm.
And as the current state of our LDRs, the current state of our LDRs, we do not have such a critter on the books, as it were. So, you know, I was just disagreeing with your statement about the...
Okay. Did that provide some clarification when I restated that?
I understood what it was, but I wanted you to clarify it.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Okay.
So also, you testified to the fact that we are the custodians of the Floridian aquifer that we, in this county.
Yes, sir.
In regards to this project, again, I ask, by what means do we, can we object to this other than the fact, and really have any effect other than just allowing it to go through because it's a federal project?
Your local water commission has also submitted a letter to you around this decision, and we've also included that.
Wait a minute, let me stop you there. So they submitted it to us, the governing board that has no jurisdiction...
I apologize. I'm seeing a shaking of the head. They submitted it to FERC, and so I would defer you to that piece of information. Would you like for me to bring it up to you?
No, no, no. I'm saying, so they are the governing body that governs the water.
Yes, sir.
Board of Water Management.
Yes, sir.
We pay taxes to them, and they're in charge.
Yes, sir.
When it comes to that.
Mm-hmm.
So when you get up here and you say that we're, you know, we're the governing board that, you know, that has jurisdiction over the water...
Mm-hmm. But through this decision around this compressor station?
Which?
You all, when I say custodians, I mean you all are the moral custodians of this decision, correct?
All right. Let's just be clear on that, okay?
Yes.
So, but this evening, we will address the compressor station as so read.
Yes.
But as far as the Sable Trail Pipeline and all that stuff, beyond requesting information to educate ourselves, which we could do that all day long, and if this whole board sat up and said, "We don't want it, we don't want it, we don't want it..."
You can force them. You can legally force them to create alternate routes. And if they cannot provide a safe alternate route, they must leave this county.
You have to let me speak.
I apologize.
All right? Please don't over, I mean, I won't let you do it to anybody on this board. Please respect it. Tell us and know in so many words how that can be done, for the benefit of the board, for the benefit of the public.
You all legally, as the public even, through a simple FOIA request, can demand more information from this company. It is your legal right to do so. You are also, on this county commission, through your communications with them and because of the respect that you all garner as a county commission, and rightfully so, have the authority to demand more information from them and to ensure that they propose to you alternate routes that are safe based on the geological and the topographical studies that they provide.
So that would be a request?
Yes. And that's mostly because it's important, like you said, I apologize that I spoke over you. Excuse me. I really do apologize for that. It's mostly out of respectful legal terminology, right? That you all request something. I would personally, if it were just me and I were a resident and not a lawyer on your behalf, use the word "demand."
Okay.
For example.
Thank you. Does anybody else on the board have questions?
You covered it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You have a seat.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next, we're going to welcome up Dana Stevens. I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium.
My name's Dana Stevens. I live at 6723 210th Place in O'Brien. I believe I'm either the closest resident to the compressor station or the second closest because my next-door neighbor might have it, it's kind of right on the property line. As you've heard, we were told by Sable Trail three times, they met us at our property, to tell us that we have absolutely nothing to do with this pipeline. There's only two, in last May, or this past May of 2015, did they show up and go, "Hey, we didn't know you existed." I'm kind of realizing, like the person up here said, this company has no idea. They're sending out maps, and I'm even asking them at the front gate when they said, "We're coming to meet with your affected neighbors." So gee, my wife would like to spread her grandmother's ashes. Are you telling me we have nothing to do with it? No, we have nothing to do with it. Only again, like I said, and they showed up with a little GPS stick and said, "We got to come in and survey your property real quick. We didn't know you existed." So the competence level I have, we walked back there with them, they looked at it, there's a sinkhole right where the pipeline goes across. They talked about bringing in some equipment, looking at it, they haven't done that yet. And I believe it was just yesterday where we got a letter saying, "If we don't settle with them, we'll be in federal court in February." Whatever it's called, I forgot. I've worked as a fireman in the city of Miami for 30 years. My wife and I looked for three or four years for a nice, quiet, calm place to retire. Came, we moved in, and it wasn't, but two years after that that we're dealt with this and it just, you know, like a few other people have said, "Hey, if it goes in, I might have to pack up and move out. If it's going to cause vibrations, and I've already got a couple sinkholes right where the pipeline's going." Another one probably 200 feet from it on the back property line, close to the compressor station. They came, they looked, and I can tell you, they didn't care. They just looked at it and walked off. I've asked them several questions, a list of questions. I had two of their attorneys and a construction guy, who by the way says that there will be no methane used in this pipeline whatsoever. This is the company you guys are going to deal with? This is who we want as people installing something, that we would like it to be as safe as possible? And they don't even know what they're pumping. Depending on which guy you talk to, they have no idea. They had no idea where their survey were, survey markers were, until they came, looked, and stood there and told us, "Well, this guy made a mistake, this guy made a mistake, this guy..." This is what we're dealing with. And we've only been dealing with it since May. So, all I got, I know my wife is upset because we did end up spreading the ashes and making a little memorial for her. And of course, half their temporary permit that they want for their parking construction vehicles and using them are all over that spot. So we haven't settled with them. We've told them, "No, there's only about 100 feet of the pipeline crossing our property, but I'm going to fight it as long as I can. I don't want the compressor station, and I don't want the pipeline. Period." Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next speaker we'll welcome up is Deborah Johnson. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, Mrs. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen. I wish to address the safety violations of Spectra Energy. Spectra Energy has, I'll wait till you finish speaking.
Go ahead.
Spectra Energy has the worst history of violations with the EPA ever, 164, most of them being, well, some of them being PCBs, which were outlawed in the 1970s. They have spread PCB contamination via pipelines through 15 states, the latest being Pennsylvania. They've paid out millions and millions of dollars in fines. There are still PCBs in their pipelines that are connecting to the Sable Trail Pipeline. In May, the latest incident, we'll just go to the latest one, of May 31st, 2015, a pipeline blew in the Arkansas River. Spectra Energy claims that they are monitoring these pipelines 24/7. They had no clue this pipeline blew. It was 24 hours later that a tugboat operator discovered his tugboat had, and I will quote here, "Concrete scattered across the deck, skid marks across the boat's surface and handrails, and an exhaust stack knocked over. The concrete still had the form of a pipe and parts of where it was covered with soot. He decided it must have been on fire when it went across his boat. He believes a big piece of pipe blew out of the river and flew through the air." Spectra, as of June 8th in 2015, have not found 400 feet of that pipeline. I don't know the status of that now. As far as their response time to compressor station blowouts and pipeline incidents, ruptures, don't necessarily have to be explosions, they can just be pipeline ruptures where 400 feet of pipeline will go flying through the air and looks like a crater hit. They will just simply do, as Johanna said, shut off the valves. The rest of it's up to us, okay? For a company that is handling such dangerous material through and under a river, imagine if that pipeline had blown up underneath the Swanee River where our aquifer is actually running through into the river, under the river, all over the river. I mean, if that had happened, where would all that methane and PCBs and dioxins, or maldehyde, inorganic substances, volatile inorganic substances, where would that have gone? Right into our water supply. So I would just like to ask you to consider not allowing them to cross the rivers in Swanee County. It is not safe for them to do so. And if you would like the maps and material, you could read them much better than online I could, so I had them printed up. It's okay to hand them over?
Sure.
they wanted to speak about the compressor station. The balance of the requests do not indicate anywhere on there about the compressor station, but they simply want to speak about the pipeline. We can save those for the end, or maybe you've heard enough testimony that you're ready to make a decision at this point, and I'll follow the direction of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to proceed, and we can hold the public comment on the rest of the pipeline until the end of the meeting.
Is that the general consensus of the balance of the board?
I have a minute.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, as the record reflects, for the resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Swanee County, Florida, supporting the movement of the Sable Trail Hildreth Compression Station, also known as Compression Station 5, Option 2, on the corner of County Road 49 and Market Road. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll do one other thing, and then we'll take a brief break here. We're going to go to the consent agenda. A portion of our meeting this evening, items four through 15, gentlemen, are there any items that you would like to pull for individual consideration? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve items four through 15 on the consent agenda.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wayne Wright, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We'll break for 10 minutes. We'll come back at 6:57 PM, 6:57 PM.
Tampa.
Thank you, sir.
And we don't need it.
I hate to break up all the fine fellowship.
Joe, thanks for coming.
But we need to bring this meeting back to order. If you're following along in our agenda, you'll notice that constitutional offices, items, there are none, there are none advertised, or none requested to be placed on the agenda. But generally during this time, we will allow any constitutional officers that are present to speak or address the board at this time. So if there are any that would like to, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move on to proclamations and presentations. There are none. We have no time-specific items. Thank the good Lord this evening. Commissioner items, are there any commissioner items that we would like to add to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to county attorney. Mr. Privat, do you have anything you'd like to address the board about?
The resolution's been addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to general business, item number 16, additional agenda items. I had four. We've currently, we discussed the resolution opposing the location of the Hildreth National Gas, Natural Gas Compressor Station. That leaves us with three items. I'll read them into the record. Number one, request approval to submit the Swanee River Regional Library 2015-2016 Annual Plan of Operations to the Florida Department of State as required for receipt of grant funds for library services for Swanee, Hamilton, and Madison Counties. Number two, authorize chairman to initial Scrivener's errors on the 2015-16 FERDAP Grant Agreement A6025 and A6016, approved on the October 20th, 2015, regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. And number three, adoption of an enabling resolution associated with the Florida Department of Transportation Supplemental Agreement for County Road 252, as approved at the regularly scheduled meeting on November 3rd, 2015. Gentlemen, are there any further items that need to be added at this time? Hearing none, we'll proceed with those items. Do you have any objection to these items be added to the agenda? Hearing none. Number one, request approval to submit the Swanee River Regional Library 2015-2016 Annual Plan of Operations to the Florida Department of State as required for receipt of grant funds for library services for Swanee, Hamilton, and Madison Counties. We'll welcome up Betty Lawrence, Director of Libraries. If the board has any questions, Ms. Lawrence, if you have any comments or none, that's fine as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mission is Mr. Chair, community. This is sort of standard practice. Each year, we have to give a report to the state with regards to a response to our long-range plan, and that's what this annual plan of action is. You approve the annual plan, I think it was in September, October, this referenced that plan, and they require that I send them this document every year for the length of that plan, and that's five years.
Are there any questions of the board to Mrs. Lawrence?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wayne Wright, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Moving on to number two, authorize chairman to initial Scrivener's errors on the 2015-16 FERDAP Grant Agreement A6025 and A6016, approved on the October 20th, 2015, Moving on to number two, authorize chairman to initial Scrivener's errors on the 2015-2016 FERDAP Grant Agreement A 6025 and A 6016 approved at the regularly scheduled meeting October 20th, 2015. We'll welcome Greg Scott to address any comments or any concerns the board may have.
Be glad to answer any questions you have, it's just cleaning up the document they sent back to us.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. It's in the packet that you received here this evening. The attorney has reviewed the changes and has approved it as, any changes that have been made. Do you have any questions, board members? Hearing none, I just need a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
I second it.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving on to number three, adoption of enabling resolution associated with the Florida Department of Transportation Supplemental Agreement for County Road 252, approved at the regularly scheduled meeting on November 3rd, 2015. Turning our attention to Randy Harris, County Administrator.
I'll be glad to answer any questions. That's the one that DOT asked us to go ahead and get approved quickly, which we did, but we didn't have time to get the enabling resolution together at the time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any questions of Mr. Harris on this issue, this matter?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wayne Wright, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item number 17 on our regular agenda, public comment, current, public concerns and comments. I have asked that you fill out comment cards, and first, I'm going to welcome up Mr. Carl McKinney. He's with the Swanee Democrat, and he's going to share with us, his email with us for the benefit of the residents. I think the balance of his hat.
Hi. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody had my contact information. If anybody who didn't get a chance to speak, you know, wanted to add a comment, or even those who did get a chance to speak, this is my email here. You can find it on the website as well. I'm just going to leave it here if anybody wants to check it out when they're leaving. But it's on the Swanee Democrat website as well. If you find any article I've written, it'll have it right below my name. My name's Carl. Carl McKinney.
Mr. McKinney, could you state your address for the record?
The email address? Yes.
No, 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 your personal address.
Personal address. 9544 East US 27, Branford, Florida.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Mrs. Carol Lee Howell, and she wants to address the board on how meetings are handled.
Carol Lee Howell, 7408 169 Drive. It's been a while since I've been up here, but I just, we have all these citizens here, and I feel bad that, that I, they probably all have very similar things that they'd like to say. I just feel bad that some were chosen, got the chance to speak before, before we were on break, and some will have to wait until now, and I just, because they didn't have the right terminology, because they had pipeline and not, I mean, how were they supposed to know? I think that's unfair to them. I think if they make the effort to come all the way from Orion, I mean, they should have the opportunity to speak. I just feel like people, it takes time to come here to say, okay, you know, instead of, boy, I really would like to stay and watch the evening news, no, I, no, I think I should come to a county committee meeting. So I think it's important for everybody to get the opportunity to speak and, before votes are made, and, and I've heard that from other meetings, there's votes were made and people wanted to speak, but it's, because some votes get rushed through. I just, you know, it's not right. I think that should be just, I, I felt very strongly that people should have the opportunity to speak, and I understand if several of you probably have the same, have the same concerns, not, maybe, you know, have three of the people. If they're all going to say the same thing, I understand that. You know, you have to put, you have to put some measurement of time on that. I recognize that. But, you know, and have them decide among themselves who's going to speak for them, something like that, but because somebody didn't, you know, put the right thing on the card, and by the way, I, I don't like the card. I do not like the card at all, because, because it just, well, I suffered a stroke six years ago in December, and my handwriting. I can't do it, and I don't like asking for help. So, but I'm learning to ask for help, because it's not just handwriting. Where I, did I have that? Sorry. That word, shirt, gets me every time. One second.
Take your time, Mrs. Howell.
So, it's okay, I'm good at asking for help now, or getting, no, good is not the right thing to say either. I'm getting, I'm getting better at asking for help, but I don't like to ask for help. So, just, I'm getting better at asking for help, but I still don't like it, and I don't like the comment card, because I, there's got to be a better way. Thank you.
Just remind everyone, Mrs. Howell is a fixture here at these meetings. She makes an effort to come to everyone, and we are certainly honored to have her here when we feel like we can't make it to the meetings because of various things. She's, she's here and accounted for, and we're thankful for the input that she gives very much for that. Mrs. Howell, in response to your concern about the comment cards, we feel that to streamline the meetings so that we're efficient, and we want to move the meeting forward, it becomes necessary, and especially in situations such as this, that we try to find some method to get all the testimony out there that we can so that the board can make a decision. In this case, the issue at hand had to do with the compressor station, and I, all I did is I simply went through the public comments cards and selected those that wanted to talk about that issue. The comment cards will be recognized during the comments and concerns section, which is where they're specifically supposed to go. I will say that after reviewing some online articles with some other commissioners in the state, that we have a fairly liberal policy when it comes to speaking. Many boards through the state are very, very stuck on Robert's Rule of Order. People are not allowed to speak until recognized, generally at the end of the meeting or at the very beginning of the meeting, and they go through and they do the county's business. So, I am proud that we, we still have citizens that can stand up during our meeting and offer their comments, and I think you all know that most meetings, when we're having discussions here, people will stand up and they will offer their input, and I will recognize them for their input. And so I appreciate if Mrs. Howell, if you would like to speak, you do not have to fill out a comment card. Simply raise your hand, and I will recognize you from this point forward, as long as I am chairman. Okay? Thank you very much. Next, we'll listen to, I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to stick with, just to try to cull these down some, I'm going to stick with some local residents for the time being, and then as time allows, as the board wants to continue to hear testimony, then I'll continue to go. Gentlemen, I will tell you that most of these comment cards have to do with the Sable Pipeline in general. They do not have anything to do with anything before this board at this time or anything scheduled in the future. So, I'm going to allow a few of these, and if it be your will, you let me know when you guys have heard enough. I'm going to place the burden on you, okay, at this point in time, as a collective board. But we'll listen now to Lori McCrany. We'll welcome her up, and we'll give, and we'll ask that she give her name and address for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name's Lori McCrany. I live at 841 167th Place in Live Oak, Florida. It is in Swanee County in the northwestern corner. I'd like to speak to you this evening regarding the Swanee River Water Management and a memorandum that they wrote to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding the Sable Trail Pipeline. I know that you have recognized these water management's role here. They are, they do have four areas of responsibility under Chapter 373 of the Florida statutes, water supply, natural systems, water quality, and flood protection. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission's draft environmental impact study, the DEIS, for the Sable Trail Project acknowledges that the region's Florida and aquifer is one of the highest-producing aquifers in the world, providing about 60% of Florida's groundwater used. The DEIS acknowledges that the karst terrain that the Sable Trail Pipeline project would go through is critical in controlling recharge and discharge of the Florida and aquifer system, and that the project would have some environmental impacts. Nonetheless, the FERC staff have concluded that these impacts would be reduced to less than significant by the project's impact minimization efforts and construction methods. I would like to summarize very briefly what the water management, who controls the Swanee River Water Management District, had to say about the Sable Trail Pipeline. In contrast, the memorandum from Swanee River Water Management District geologist Carlos Hurd and Dale Jenkins to the FERC raised serious concerns. The Swanee River Water Management District advised that the pipeline route avoid, avoid highly sensitive water resource features, karst topography, and unconfined drinking water sources, that is, the Florida aquifer within the district. Pipeline trenching could intersect the local water table. In some areas, horizontal drilling near streams and rivers could impact local flow systems. The deeper horizontal drilling required to pass under large rivers like the Swanee could potentially intercept karst conduits, so the possibility of restriction or redirection of groundwater flow to local springs and wells exists. I'll speak more on water flow a little bit later in my presentation here. Shallow caves in the porous karst may prevent installing effective structural support for the pipe. Grouding in these cavernous zones may be ineffective. Excessive grout pumping may cause localized groundwater contamination if pumped into flow systems. Keep in mind that this pipeline will traverse Swanee County from north to south and bisect the county, and there are concerns about the entire pipeline route, not just what a compressor station can do. You need to be aware that because Swanee County is considered a rural area with a sparse population, the thickness of the steel that will be used for this pipeline is smaller than it would be used in urban areas. That means that the people that live along this pipeline, their lives are less valued simply because there are less of them in the area, and that it is a plain fact that you will get thinner steel pipe going through rural areas, and that's why they choose areas such as Swanee County to go through, not to mention the fact that they have to go through Swanee County because we're at the heart of the Florida and aquifer. We sit on top of it. Periodic testing of pipeline integrity will require large volumes of local groundwater. The sudden extraction of such large volumes of water could trigger sinkhole activity. Water will be contaminated in the testing process and must be disposed of safely. That's just a nutshell of what the water management had to say about the pipeline project, and I would like for you guys to consider that you are moral guardians of these resources here, and you are also guardians of the economic development of this area. And if this pipeline causes major problems, it will have a very adverse effect on economic development in Swanee County, so please consider that. Gentlemen, I sent each of you an email a few days ago, and I included in its entirety the letter from the EPA to FERC regarding objections and considerations for the pipeline, and the focus was on the Florida and aquifer. Gentlemen, if you have not had a chance to read it, I strongly urge you to read it in its entirety. It is very thorough, and it does thoroughly discuss all of the issues, and there are quite a few of them. It also very clearly says that FERC has not done its due diligence in reviewing this project. In an October 26, 2015, 30-page letter to the FERC, the EPA details its very significant concerns regarding the Sable Trail Pipeline threats to the Florida and aquifer, including the possibility that the project could alter the flow of rivers such as the Swanee into underground conduits. Let that sink in a minute. They're basically saying, and this is the EPA, EPA scientist, that if they blow out a cavern under the Swanee River, which is a distinct possibility, they could alter the flow of the entire river. We know it happens. It happens in nature. If you've been to Santa Fe Sink and Santa Fe Rise, you know that rivers, the entire river can go underground and come up somewhere else, and yes, there is a distinct possibility that this could happen with this project. EPA also says that the Sable Trail Pipeline is not the only option to meet Florida power and light's energy needs. The LNG import export mode of natural gas transmission can also meet Florida power and light's request for a reliable, cost-competitive natural gas. In other words, the project is unnecessary. They have presented this to the public and to various government agencies as inevitable and absolutely required, and that is patently false. There are alternative ways to get natural gas to Florida power energy facilities, so I would like for you guys to consider that. I also ask that you consider the permanent burden of the Sable Trail Pipeline to Swanee County, who will ensure the due diligence of safety to protect our citizens and our natural resources in the decades to come. Gentlemen, this is a very dangerous and unnecessary project. Please resolve to stop the Sable Trail Pipeline from dissecting Swanee County.
Thank you, Ms. McCrany.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
I have a question for Ms. McCrany.
Mrs. McCrany, Commissioner Fleming has a question for you.
Got a question?
In one of your statements, you stated that less populated areas, they use thinner metal.
Yes.
That is documented in there?
That is documented.
Through FPL or?
That would be documented, at least to my knowledge, it was in the hearing. The organization, WO Walls, filed a lawsuit with the Florida DEP and Sable Trails as joint defendants, and this was presented in testimony both by Sable Trails representatives and by some of WO Walls people, that thinner pipe can be used in rural areas. So that is a documented fact. We can get you details if you like.
Okay.
Okay. We'll do it. We'll do it.
Thank you, Ms. McCraney. Gentlemen, you want to keep going?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with letting everybody speak, but why don't we go ahead and use the timer?
Okay.
That way, everybody's got a chance to speak their mind, but they're not monopolizing the time as well.
Okay. Let me see if I can remember how to work it. I think that's how it goes. No, that's down. We need to go down. All right. Got it.
There you go.
All right. Welcome up, Mrs. Victoria Stevens. Mrs. Stevens, when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name's Victoria Stevens. I live at 6723-210th Place in O'Brien, Florida. What can I say? Today, I'm asking that when you go home tonight, that you pray for guidance and courage to say no and oppose this. I don't want it in my backyard. I put my grandmother's ashes in my backyard. So, this would mean a lot. It means a lot to my kids and to my grandmother. I oppose the pipeline and I oppose the pump station being in my backyard. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Next, we'll welcome up Ms. Donna Ellis. Mrs. Ellis, when you come to the podium, please state your name for the record. And also, just as a point of order, when your time is up, you will hear a little chime. So, that is the, so that you're not surprised by it.
Good evening. My name is Donna Ellison. My address is 4032 West Tower Road in Live Oak. Many of you know where I live. You've been to my home. This pipeline is going through 80 acres of mine and my husband's land, and we're very concerned about it. It's also going right through the back of my daughter's land, which has three of my grandchildren living there. You know I live about a mile from the Swanee River, half a mile from Falmouth Springs. And in this area, there is an underground river that flows from Falmouth all the way to the river. On top of that, there's numerous sinkholes that are spring-fred, deep sinkholes. These have been, actually have been dove and they have records of how deep these sinkholes are. They've actually been dove all the way to the river. This pipeline is going right through this area. We learned when we testified for WOALS against Sable Trails a few weeks ago, Sable Trails didn't even realize that it's going through this area. And it also didn't even realize that it's going through, going to intersect through another pipeline right in front of my house. They didn't even know it. Once you, when you cross a pipeline, it makes the other pipeline much more dangerous. This scares the mess out of me because they consider us, they don't consider us, they don't consider us. You know, they can put in thinner pipes, they can put it under pipeline. We don't matter. You know, we really don't matter. They're putting, in fact, right where they're going to dig and put the pipeline, we had a sinkhole fall in. We didn't even realize the sinkhole was there because the sinkhole was only about eight to 10 feet wide. It was about 10 feet deep and then it went underground. It's within, we, my husband measured it, 143 feet from where they're digging, they're going to dig the pipeline. We noticed it, we found it because we lost a yearling calf in it. He fell in it and died. This is right where they're putting it, putting it down. It's going within 100 yards of my home. This is scariness. I mean, they don't, you know, we just are asking if there's anything, anything that you could do. We're just praying that y'all will do something. We want, we want our county, we want our water to stay clean. We want our water to stay here. Please, help us.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellis. All right. Next speaker will be Ms. Rosalynn Johnson. Do you want to speak now or? No? Okay. Thank you. The balance of the requests, gentlemen, are for folks that are not residents of our county. Do you guys have any? There's about seven, eight, eight of those. You guys have any desire?
Let him speak, Mr. Chairman.
Say again?
I said, I don't have a problem with letting him speak.
What's the ballot for the board?
I'm okay.
All right. We'll welcome up Mrs. Deanna Miracle. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Deanna, D-E-A-N-N-A, Miracle, M-E-R-I-C-L-E. My address is 7712 Southwest 32nd Lane, Jasper, Florida. So, I am your neighbor to the west in Hamilton County. And I was also present at the hearing between WOALS where we challenged the environmental resource, resource permit and easement to use sovereign submerged lands that DEP has announced that they are going to issue for the Sable Trail Pipeline. And one of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention that you may not already be aware of is that there are threatened and endangered species that will be affected by this pipeline. The Gulf Sturgeon use the Swanee River for spawning and the pipeline is proposed to be horizontally drilled under the Swanee River and over the Falmouth Cathedral Cave System. There is a globally threatened species called the Powid Cave Crayfish. It's listed as G2S2 on one of the documents that you received in your packet. And G2S2 means that it is imperiled because of rarity and vulnerable to extinction due to some natural or man-made factor. The Powid Cave Crayfish lives in spring caves and in the conduits. So, if gas leaks into the conduits or causes collapse of the conduits, then this species may become extinct. And I do believe that even though Sable Trail tells us that there's nothing we can do, that it's coming through, that it's all up to FERC, if we all stand up to it, local governments, citizens, organizations, that in America, we have to have a voice. We're lucky to live in America where we do have a voice and I would encourage you to use your voice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Miracle. We'll welcome up now Chris Miracle. If you would, state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, could I go after Dennis Price? Could I go and say?
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Dennis, we'll welcome up now Dennis Price. Just state his name and address for the record. I'd appreciate it.
My name's Dennis Price. I live at P.O. Box 45, White Springs, Florida. I should say that I was conscripted by WOALS to represent them as a geologist at this administrative hearing where I was accepted as an expert witness in geology. Keep it short and get to the important points. I'm also a registered well driller in the state of Florida. I've drilled all over these counties, all over Swanee County, Hamilton County. And the first 30, 40, 50, 60 feet that you drill is very unstable. Most well drillers have to drive casing to even hold the hole open. And that's just for 4, 6, 8, 12-inch wells. These guys are going to drill a 30-inch bore hole underneath Highway 90, underneath the river at a depth of 60 feet from where they start, which puts them down about 30 feet below the bottom of the river. And it puts them, I don't know how deep below Highway 90. Where they cross Highway 90 by the chicken plant, they are going to be going right over, maybe 30 feet over the cave system itself or the Falmouth Cave System. And that's an economic resource to this county and a cultural resource. They put that in jeopardy by crossing over it with such a thin layer of material between their digging and the cave system itself. So, the bottom line is, they're, the entire strip through Swanee County is very unstable. We all know that. You start taking off the clay, the thinner that clay is, the more likely you're going to have sinkholes. And as you get further and further south into Swanee County, that clay thins and thins until a lot of times you're right on top of the limestone. I've permitted the limestone mines at Denali and some of those other, I'm very familiar with the thickness of this material in those areas. And we all know that with low groundwater levels that we're experiencing, with all the, you know, farmers with their irrigation systems that have been put in in the past few years, that we get another drought, they're going to be pumping, we're going to, you know, get lower and lower in the aquifer. You get heavy rains, that's what causes a lot of these sinkholes to occur. And we're going to be faced with this. It's impossible that this entire strip through Swanee County is not going to come back and haunt us in some way or fashion. There's going to be sinkholes occurring. Their experts do not deny any of this. Their response to it all is, oh, we can fix that. So, that's all I have to say and I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Now, we'll welcome up Chris Miracle. Please come forward.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing us. My name's Chris Miracle. I live at 7712 Southwest 32nd Lane, Jasper, Florida, on the Withlacoochee River, just a short distance from here. I'd like to draw your attention to your packet. There's a karst features and hydrology of Withlacoochee Crossing in Hamilton County by professional geologist David Brown. I'd like to make a comparison between the abandoned Withlacoochee Site with the Swanee Site and the Falmouth Site. If you would have allowed Dennis to elaborate, he would tell you a lot more about these sites because he did a whole study on them. But in Mr. Brown's conclusions and recommendations, which you have there, he addresses the complex nature of the Withlacoochee Crossing Site. And he states, "The disruptive nature of the drilling and reaming process will have high probability of creating hydrofractures, sinkholes, or possibly swallots during construction and may also activate the raveling of overlaying sediments resulting in subsequent sinkhole development after completion of drilling activities. The destruction of preferential flow paths along existing fracture and cave systems could adversely affect the local groundwater gradient and reduce or eliminate groundwater flow to several springs that provide critical base flow to the Withlacoochee River." I believe you heard Lori McCraney read something similar to that in the water management memorandum. Based on Mr. Brown's conclusions and public opposition, the Sable Trail abandoned the Withlacoochee Site. And we heard Mr. Price, he's got some concerns over the river crossing in the Falmouth Cave Mr. Brown, you know, he came up with similar conclusions to the Withlacoochee Site. And I think it's important to compare the Withlacoochee Site to the Swanee and Falmouth Sites because we've seen why Sable Trail has moved their route in the past off the Withlacoochee. And similar conditions exist across the Swanee and Falmouth Cave Systems. All three have very complex geology. Mr. Brown addresses these similarities further. He says, "As shown in Figure 6, the Swanee River and Withlacoochee River confluence regional topography is an extremely complex karstic terrain with highly pockmarked land surface indicating very high frequency of sinkhole occurrence and activity. A review of this Liadar image clearly portrays the complex hydrology of both the study area and surrounding region, not just that crossing." I'm almost done.
If you could just finish up quickly. I have to offer fairness here.
These two geologists, Mr. Brown and Mr. Price, have come up with similar conclusions about the complex nature of the entire regional geology. I'm inclined to believe them.
Thank you, Mr. Miracle.
Can I make one quick point about your letter that you wrote, the letter you read earlier?
Briefly, please.
Thank you. Sable Trail attorneys in this letter that you read earlier, they infer that they already have this application in this letter. I just want to let people know, they have made application for this pipeline, but it has not been approved. Thank you. And I would request that this commission pass a resolution against the pipeline route as it stands.
Thank you. Now, we'll welcome up, back to a local resident, Bo Hancock.
Thank you. My name's Bo Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road. Just a quick question, if I may, through the chair to legal.
Mr. Provatt, you taking questions?
Yes, sir.
Given the, their attorney's letter and the Natural Gas Act that they reference in there, is there anything legally this county can do to stop the compressor station, the pipeline, et cetera?
What you're addressing with the compression station and what we've been talking about here this evening have to do with issues of public safety, convenience, noise, you know, those types of things. The Federal Pipeline Safety Act, I think it's initials are PSA.
NGA.
Something like that. It is a preemption, you know, thing to be able to go through there. We cannot enact a more stricter standard with regard to safety, you know, convenience on the pipeline. There was reference made earlier, you know, to things that we could do or do zoning-wise to be able to address that. At this particular stage, we do not have anything in our LDRs or comprehensive plan to address pipeline siding, pipeline areas for LDRs or other concerns. So, we haven't addressed them and they're in the process. So, we are preempted, as he would, as he suggests, with regard to those safety issues. But, and the hearing and objection, objection time for the last FERC hearing, I think, expired on October 24th of this year. So, it would take, I'd have to see how we could reopen it. I don't know what the answer to that particular thing is off the top of my head, but that's where we are.
Okay. I just wanted, you know, I didn't know whether this was just a, you know, everyone coming up here, other than giving their opinions, their opposition to this, if legally there was anything that could be done at this point. I think that Chairman Michelle alluded to that at the beginning, that, you know, all you had before you was a resolution that, that we oppose this compressor station. So, I just, I don't want everyone to think that there's some legal way there or something that's going to stop this down the road. I don't know.
Well, I don't know. You heard the attorney's testimony earlier and I asked her, I said, what can we do? And she said, and she said, we could request, you know, for anything. She said that if it were personal, she'd say, demand, but as far as it goes, that's what she said.
And I just want to verify that.
I'm sorry, you moved chairs.
I want to verify that I'm a lawyer and I have a master environmental policy, but I'm not a.
You're not a attorney. Master of environmental policy. Okay. All right. Sorry.
No, no, I'm not.
I thought that's what it said on your thing. Mr. Hancock? Mr. Wainwright?
I was just going to make a statement as, and counsel had already stated it, we're actually past the comment period. So, you know, obviously, any effort we can make is, I don't think it's wasted. I think we need to continue. Uh, I think we need to continue to evaluate it and take this lady's advice and, and try to seek out more information as much as we can. But, outside of that, I mean, we can, we can send a resolution, we can air our dislike, uh, but, like you said, we're already past the comment period. I mean, I don't even think they have to even consider taking the information we give them, or, or the comments we give them. I, I'm just, I know, but I'm just saying it, I don't, I don't know that they legally have to, is what I'm getting at.
Let me wait. Has the comment period been extended? Hold on, hold on just a second here. Is there anyone here who can offer a comment to that? Mr. Miracle, can you, okay. Come to the podium, please, for the record.
The comment period, like you have said, is, it has passed. However, FERC is accepting comments and is requesting Sable Trail to answer questions. I personally have made comments to FERC, uh, and they, FERC has in turn requested Sable Trail to answer my questions. And they will continue to do this, and they are bound to do this. The Army Corps of Engineers is also still accepting comments, and they can stop this pipeline.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Please come to the podium.
I, I do genuinely appreciate that y'all are bound by law in this situation, and I respect that, and I really do appreciate that you have let so many people speak and that you're letting me speak again. So, thank you, and I'm sorry to take away time from more community members. I, I would say, yes, please, if you all would generously consider it, approaching FERC about alternative root analysis, especially based on the topography and the geology of this area. Uh, the fact that this company has failed to provide really any genuine alternate root analysis, especially for y'all's sensitive topography in this county, I think is something to be raised with them. The Army Corps of Engineers is still accepting comments until December 11th. Uh, that's directly related, especially to the wetlands that you all have in this area, and I would, I would urge y'all to submit comments to them as well, and that will be considered by FERC and by the Army Corps of Engineers. And I will say also that you all do, do all have the power, again, to really make sure, since all of the potentially proposed routes, even though, alternative routes, even though they haven't done a full analysis, and both the EPA and FERC cites them for this, Sable Trail and Spectra, um, that they clearly have not done a sufficient alternate root analysis for y'all's county, uh, based on any geological study that's been submitted to them and, and to y'all, and has been raised in court. And the EPA and FERC both, both know that. Um, I think that it would go a long way to have y'all raise those concerns with those agencies. And while it's true that you all have your hands tied in certain areas, you do have a lot of power when it comes to approaching those agencies that maybe residents don't have. So, I would just support that.
Thank you. All right. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to, I'm going to read out some names, and, and these are the, the comment cards I have. And if you, if you hear your name and you still want to speak, please raise your hand. Marion Davinsky. But, wait, 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 just raise your hand, ma'am. Just raise, just right, when I. Karen L. Arrington. John S. Quartersman. And Mrs. Wheeler. Okay. Do, do, how many of you want to speak? Raise your hand to this board.
They have it.
No, listen, listen, okay? If, I'm giving them the option to speak. I'm just saying, if what they have, what, what they want to say has already been said, then they may say, "No, I don't want to speak at this time." So, that's all I'm doing, just trying to, just trying to be efficient. All right. So, we'll welcome up Marion Davinsky. From she, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mary Von Davinsky. And I'm the Chair of the Suwannee San John Group, the Sierra Club Group, and we cover about 15 counties, and Suwannee is part of our count, our group.
Ms. Davinsky, where, did you state your address? Did I miss that?
My address is 2025 Northwest 35th Terrace in Gainesville, Florida 32605.
Thank you.
So, the reason I want to speak is that, um, your county is beautiful. We have about 33 members of Sierra Club in your county, but we have 1,800 members in our 15 counties. And in Florida, I think we have about 15,000 members. And when I lived in South Florida, everybody comes to North Florida, enjoy your springs and your rivers. So, Sierra Club is a club where, where we have a motto of exploring nature, enjoying nature, and also protecting nature. It's a, an outing organization that really ends up being a conservation organization. And the reason I'm coming is because, I'm like you, I'm getting an education on this Sable Trail pipeline. I just became the Chair this January. And, um, I'm not a lawyer, but yet, I care much about nature, and I think that you have one of the nicest counties in Florida, and you need to protect it. When, the more I read about this, um, Sable Trail pipeline project, the more I see that it's planned by people who are businessmen, salesmen, and they want to make money, and they are not really looking at all the aspects. When I, I'm reading, um, some of the documents I've had, I can see that the company is not really telling the truth about the possible hazards of a pipeline. And if I look at what I have here, they said that, at the Jasper hearing, that there was absolutely no problems with drilling under the Suwannee or the Santa Fe, despite their own Corts mitigation plan, saying they already lost drilling fluids in test borings at each of those rivers, despite Sable Trail and DEP doing nothing about sinkholes, springs, and gopher tortoise. So, you know, you really need to look at all the possible, again, hazards and dangers to the environment. Sierra Club is an organization that is very concerned with water quality, the springs, the rivers, and air quality. You know, Sable Trail, natural gas, all of that is going to bring, if in case of accidents, incidents, some methane in the air. So, basically, you're going to look at, um, you need to really educate yourself about this. And if you can, I think that from the notes I took, you can look at the fact that the Federal Energy Regulation Commission look at this project for the public interest, but you have to look at what is the private profit of FPL. FPL got $700 million to bring natural gas from Oklahoma to, down to Florida, for, mostly for exports. So, what's the benefit to the people of Suwannee County? You know? You really need to, to look at that. If you want to look into, um, increasing revenues for your county, look into renewable energies, you know, wind power, solar power. Sierra Club has two campaigns. One is beyond coal, one is beyond oil, to really get away from all the dirty fuel, um, energy sources. So, thank you very much. I think you are doing a very open meeting here. So, listen and educate yourself, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Have you ever been to the, I was going to comment, just ask if you'd ever been to the county commission meetings in Alachua County, and, uh, ask them how, how often they get to speak over there?
I have been, yes, since I.
How, how open are those?
They're open, too. Yes.
No, I'm saying, but I mean, do they let them stand up in the middle of the meeting and, and talk and stuff, or do they have a comments and concerns section at the end?
Um, usually, yeah, there is, uh, like you have, but I think most, most of the time, you have to wait till the end of the meeting.
Right. Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right. Now, we're going to welcome up Karen Arrington.
Good evening. This is the first time I've spoken in front of the Suwannee County, um, Commission, and thank you very much for the opportunity to do so. Um, my name is, my last name is spelled A-R-R-I-N-G-T-O-N. My address is 4416 Northwest 93rd Avenue, Gainesville, Florida 32653. Um, I've also spoken in Bell in front of FERC, and, um, from what I heard then, in front of what I heard now, is just heartbreaking. Um, there are so many people in your county and in Gilchrist County and other counties, uh, their whole lives would be completely disrupted, the lives of their families would be completely disrupted, getting to the point in their country where, um, environmental degradation and destruction is so rampant everywhere. You know, they mentioned the, um, pipe explosion, you know, in Arkansas. Well, a couple of years ago, there was a heavy oil pipe leak in Monticello, or Monticello, Arkansas. You know, so these things are happening all over the country. Um, people are already moving here from someplace else, and they got to move here to someplace else. Um, your geology is incredibly complicated. As Mary Von said, she learned a lot. I'm learning a lot. It's like, whenever you come to these things, it's a, it's a geology 101, or, you know, it's, it's incredible. So, you have a beautiful place. I've been to Live Oak before. It's a beautiful town, um, a beautiful county, and I think that, I really hope, within your legal bounds, you can do whatever you can to, um, vote against, you know, just voice your opinions against the pipeline. Um, you have heroes. And, um, I don't know what else to say, except that, um, I'm really touched by what people are going through, and I really hope you'll take it very much to heart. And, and I am impressed that you let people stand up during your meeting. I think that's great. That's democracy at work. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Next, we'll welcome up, uh, Mr. John S. Quarter, Quartersman. Did I say that correctly, sir?
You did.
Thank you.
It's like quarterback, but quartermen. John S. Quarterman. I live in Lowndes County, just across the state line, and the geology underfoot really is not much different. Um, I live on Quartermen Road, if you care, 6565, AR, Georgia, 31632. Uh, we just had a sinkhole open up that almost swallowed a road, that did swallow several acres, and a couple of years ago, we had one open up that did swallow a road. The county first tried to fill it in, that failed, they ended up having to move the road, cost them half a million dollars. City of Valdosta had to sink its water wells twice as deep as they wanted to because of another sinkhole that leaks the Withlacoochee River into the aquifer. Um, I think you may have gotten a letter from Tim Carroll, who's a city councilman in Valdosta. Valdosta passed a, a resolution against this pipeline, which included a clause about the flooded and aquifer. Um, and first, I'd like to compliment you about the resolution you already passed. Thank you for doing that. This county is being looked at by everyone because it's the one county that every path ever proposed for this pipeline goes through. Also, thank you for letting citizens speak. I can tell you, in Lowndes County, they have a deputy sheriff in the back of the room, and if somebody just stood up and wanted to speak, they would have them escorted out of the room. So, um, I understand nothing's perfect. There's always room for improvement, but compared to many other places, particularly where I live, you're doing great.
Thank you.
Uh, also, thanks for videoing and publishing it on YouTube. We've been trying to get our county to do that for five years. And finally, to what I came here to talk about. I'm the President of the Walls Watershed Coalition, Inc. We're the Waterkeeper affiliate for the Upper Suwannee River, and the reason I'm here is because your citizens have been joining Walls because of the case that Walls brought against Sable Trail and DEP about this pipeline. Uh, one of your commissioners, Richard Gamble, testified there, so he can tell you about much of that. And, um, if, if FERC supersedes everything, then why did Sable Trail spend three days sitting in a hearing they took at the back three rows litigating about environment? You know, that letter they sent you does not tell you the whole truth. The cases they cited that they claimed showed that they could, that federal law supersedes everything were New York cases. And in fact, uh, it does not supersede everything. Uh, for example, uh, noise, you might want to look into that. I'm not so sure it really supersedes noise. And I can also send you a ruling by the FERC commissioners themselves, which say they do not supersede local ordinances whenever they can avoid it. Um, as to Commissioner Fleming's earlier question about the thickness of the pipe, uh, Sable Trail flew in an executive, Alan Lambeth, from Houston, who testified to that. It's also in their own documents. Mr. Lambeth also referred to this area in which we all live as the middle of nowhere. Um, if I could say just a couple of brief things.
Mrs. Wheeler, do you yield some of your time to allow him to continue? Okay, thank you.
Um, not only is FERC still taking ecomments, in a letter from FERC's own commissioners, again, to four U.S. congressmen who asked them to do various things, FERC's own commissioner says they're not just accepting ecomments, they're still considering them according to, for the environmental impact statement. And, uh, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers explicitly, different group, of course, but the Corps of Engineers explicitly asked for input from local governments, and the Corps of Engineers, unlike the EPA, the Corps of Engineers could actually stop this pipeline. So, there's two routes that you could use. Now, um, while Sable Trail in that letter they sent you claimed that, you know, in state or local governments couldn't do anything because FERC does everything, just about last week, Sable Trail sent a letter to FERC saying FERC couldn't supersede the Florida Public Service Commission's determination of need. You know, Sable Trail would say whichever way happens to suit their need and any, their purpose in any letter they're sending. And as far as Florida's need for this pipeline, Georgia is now the fastest-growing solar market in the country. This is partly because Georgia passed a law this year making it easier to finance solar power, a law very like the one that's on the referendum in Florida for the next election. There's no reason Florida cannot leapfrog Georgia in this, in which case, there is no need at all for any new natural gas pipelines. And there are things you can do, and thank you once again for what you've already done, but there are more things that you can do despite what Sable Trail says. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Wheeler, you have about a minute left. I know it's counting the other way. I know, I know. All right. There we go.
All right. My name is Mary Helen Wheeler. I live at 1122 Northwest 18th Avenue, Gainesville, Florida. I'm a public school teacher and have been teaching in this North Florida area for 31 years. So, children are my big concern. I've also been working on water issues with a variety of these groups that are in this room for the last 10 years, and I am very much opposed to this Sable, uh, Sable pipeline. You have to excuse me, I'm trying to beat this clock. Uh, I've followed FERC from Bell to Dunellen to Jasper, although every time they call a meeting, I'm there. Um, as a matter of fact, I've been looking for the leadership in this area that has been willing to come up and protect those citizens whose stories I hope will break your heart. Uh, you all are the first ones have taken an interest in an initiative, and I appreciate it, because we've been the arms and the legs of these, this movement in trying to fight this Sable Trail pipeline. We need the muscle now, and you all are the muscle. We have talked with Congress people, we have talked with representatives our state, I don't know where the heck they are, because this is going to have a major impact on our country, on our, on our economy here. Um, I know this because last year, I campaigned through this district to run for Congress, and one of the reasons was the water and the economy that is going to be affected by this Sable Trail pipeline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your courteous and respectful comments here this evening. We really appreciate the information that you brought to the table. I didn't hear anything that I had already heard, other than the objection to the pipeline, and we, we appreciate the civil, the civil dialogue that we've had here this evening. All right. On, moving on in our agenda, I'm going to go right, we're going to go right back up to the top where we were going to elect the Chair and the Vice Chair at this time, before we move into the closing comments section of our agenda this evening. Gentlemen, uh, I will say it's been an honor serving you as a chairman on this board. I've learned a lot. Seems like just about the time you get your legs under you, it's time to change. Uh, it's that time of year, and I do, I will say that, uh, the formality of changing chairman does not necessarily mean that they must change chairman. And if that so be the, the board's desire, I'd be honored to stay on as chairman for the balance of my time in this seat. As many of you will know, I am not running for reelection for this seat, as evidenced by all of the participants here this evening. by all of the participants here this evening that want it really badly. But they will be, have the, and some of you may be running for public office, so, again, so you may not have the time that it requires. Having said that, we can either, I can entertain a motion for me to remain, or we can have a nomination, and then we do have ballots prepared for you to vote on those possible nominees, and then for your signature, so that we can show that we, who each one voted for. It's up to the Board, I'd like to hear your thoughts and your discussion on this matter at this time.
You're gonna go with the ballots?
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Okay? Well, in order to streamline the process, is there anyone who would like to submit their name as a nominee at this time? To streamline the process, so we don't have to go through multiple times of doing this. I will submit my name. Hearing none, we'll pass the ballots out?
Commissioner Chairman, if there are none, I'll just go ahead and make the motion that you continue as Chairman next year.
Thank you, Commissioner Wainwright. Motion on the floor is for me to remain as Chairman for the remainder of this year into the 2016 year, do I hear a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fleming, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we'll move on to, I thank you gentlemen for your, for your vote of confidence. Number two, hold election for Vice Chairman for 2016. We can make a nomination, several nominations if we want, or we can pass the ballots out and do it that way, if you want.
I nominate Commissioner Fleming for Vice Chairman.
Okay, nomination made by Commissioner, by Commissioner Sessions, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen, that takes care of that section of our agenda this evening. Going back down to number 18, Administrator's Comments and Information, we'll turn our attention to Randy Harris, if he has anything. Nothing, thank you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I do. I almost forgot something very significant.
Put you on the side.
I apologize, I was actually, I'm gonna tell you what I was thinking, and I was distracted. I was actually thinking of how quickly the state will tell you that the aquifer is a state resource, and I'm thinking, why are, why is the state not weighing in on this issue with Sable Trail? But being that I was distracted, I didn't, remember, I wanted to announce that I had a great conversation with Patrick Howard, who is the gentleman representing our CDBG grant for the railroad funding. Spoke to him at length on Thursday and Friday of last week, and we have finally received word that our waiver request has been approved. The waiver request enables us to now apply for a $3 million grant for railroad funding instead of the cap that was in place at $1.5 million. So that's good news, the application process is still ahead of us.
Still moving forward, okay, that's good news, good news. Can you, so that's, that's all, we still have the 1.4 million, is that what you're talking about? And then, and in addition to that, we're moving forward the grant process to get us a little bit more money?
We have a little over $1.3 million left over in an Economic Development Transportation Fund that was granted by DOT early on. We are applying for this CDBG funding and, under $3 million.
$3 million.
We're also making an additional request of Department of Transportation for funding to make up any difference then.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Moving on to Board Members' Inquiries, Requests, and Comments, we'll start at my left side, Ms. Commissioner Wainwright?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank the folks for coming out tonight, I appreciate y'all's efforts. Real convenient to sit at the House, and I don't get to sit at the House very often because of my work, but when I get the opportunity, it's welcoming, and so I appreciate y'all's coming out tonight, voicing your opinions, and we'll certainly take all this into consideration as we move forward, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wainwright. Commissioner Gamble?
I just want to second what Commissioner Wainwright was saying, we appreciate the hard work that y'all put into this, I'm looking through your, some of the paperwork, it took a lot of effort to go through and put this together, and I just wanted to say thank you, because it does make our job a lot easier.
Mr. Gamble, could you give us an update on what you testified for the other day? Kind of, give us a brief rundown.
I was, I was asked to testify on, just on my experiences on what we went through with the catalyst site, related to some of the removing of the clay, the type of sinkhole situations that we have, just give them a, based on what we went through with the construction, or the earthworks.
And the, what was convened there, was there, was there like a judge there?
It was, yeah, I don't remember the judge's name, they had an attorney on behalf of the group that was opposed to the pipeline, then you had the room full, I don't know if there were, there were several attorneys and other people there on behalf of Sable Trails. Wasn't much of a testimony, they didn't really give me an opportunity to talk, I was pretty much shot down every time I opened my mouth.
Huh, really?
Can't believe lawyers would do that.
Oh, good. All right, well, there's only, I only have a couple of things, I just wanted to make mention of the fact that there is a blinking light at the end of the truck bypass now, if you guys haven't had an opportunity to see that, that's nice, nice, blinking, flashing, doing its job. You can see it from a long way off now, hopefully that'll prevent people from running off the end of that road into the swamp. We hope. The other thing I had was, you guys are aware, or I say you gentlemen, and the public is aware, that the Governor Scott has said that Florida is not a state that would take any refugees from the Middle East, you guys may be aware of that? And I would just like to ask this Board that we send a letter of support to Governor Scott, so that he doesn't go back on that in any way, shape, or form, to prevent any refugees from coming into our state. And if the Board is agreeable to that, then we'll have staff prepare it, and I'll sign it, and I'll send it over to you.
Yes.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. The only other thing I had was the, we did the Veterans Day Parade, I appreciate the people who participated in that, I hope that the ballots of the Board, that, I'm gonna make the same arrangements for the Christmas Parade, I won't be able to be in it, as of right now, I think I'm a judge of one of the floats, of the floats, but, but I'll still make the same arrangements if you guys want to ride in the Christmas Parade. And then, of course, Brantford, if you have any, we'll go down there too, we'll ride, ride behind Randy's truck. It was hard to get Randy off of his.
I look forward to seeing all of them.
It was hard to get Randy off of his truck, but we found, we were able to commandeer his vehicle and pull it, so it looked nice, so we're happy about that. I saw Bo along the parade route there, he waved at him.
He was a target.
And that's all I have, Commissioner Sessions?
We had the raid on the Suwannee this last weekend, that I think was a success, Bo, can tell you more about that if you want to comment?
We're waiting to get all the financial information.
Too soon.
It went well.
Yeah, there were 200 kids that came for education today, from different, from different schools, and so that was a really, that was a three-day for the kids to come out and visit.
And I, one other thing I want to echo Commissioner Wainwright's comments, it takes commitment to stand up for something that you believe in, and everybody here is to be commended for that, and I hope everybody's successful in what you're fighting for.
Thank you, Commissioner Sessions. Commissioner Fleming?
I would like to voice the sentiment of the fellow commissioners for thanking each of you for coming out, and it was the educational part of it, is that sharing things that I don't know, I didn't know, but it, you know, reading newspapers in the Gainesville Suns, you find the articles in there about Sable Trail, and it's very informative. I'd also like to thank Chairman Bishaw for accepting that position again, and I want to thank my fellow commissioners also for appointing me as the Vice Chair, thank you.
You're welcome. There's not a better steward for that position, I'm gonna tell you, he's an honorable, honorable man, Commissioner Fleming is. All right, moving on to item number 20, is informational items in your packet, you gentlemen know that I had been telling you about the, some research I was doing on the Clerk's Office, and I submitted that to you in your packet, I hope you had an opportunity to review it, and I became very, very familiar with the mechanism used to fund that particular office in our county, and as you know, we control the purse strings to many of these, of all the constitutional officers, and they come before us every year, and I just did not understand it. Well, as I've reported to you before, there's still not much mechanism used to come up with a fee that these, that they use, other than just comparing, so that's basically what I did, I called up and requested the email from our four counties that are around the same population that we are, Levy County, 40,000 people, Gaston County, 46,000, Okeechobee County, 39,000, Hendry County, 39,000, and then Suwannee County, we have 43,000. And what I came up with was the fact that three, three out of the four of those counties have an Office of Budget Management under the Board of County Commissioners that prepares their budgets and so on and so forth. We allow that to, the clerk to do that, and that's okay, because it would require more funds to be used to set up another department in order for that to occur. So the amount that we transfer in basically reflects that reality, that we are not transferring in anything over and above what is reasonable among our peer counties, or those counties that have a population the same as us. So if you had a chance to review that, hopefully you came to the same conclusions that I did, that I'm satisfied, I think that it's necessary, and hopefully, if you guys keep this, as we go through budget years in the future, you'll be able to refer back to it and fill in the blanks, use it as a worksheet to kind of help you out in the, in the years to come. So, Mr. Baker, did you have anything that you wanted to add at all? Okay. Is there any questions of myself or Mr. Baker regarding this information? Mr. Gamble? Very, very briefly, sir, that time has passed.
My name's Willard Randall, 356 Northwest Friendship Way, Dixie, Florida. Sir, this pipeline they're talking about, the thickness and everything else, they didn't know how measured the pipe. 36-inch pipe, I brought my tape measure with me. You're looking at this big. All right, they're gonna go on this river, and watch this now, this 36-inch, they're gonna put another pipe, how big a pipe is that gonna be? They don't know what the heck they doing.
Thank you, sir. All right, gentlemen, that concludes this meeting, but I just need one thing, and you are very well familiar.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Sessions, seconded by Commissioner Gamble, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, thank you everyone, drive safe, see you next time if you're coming.